Whereas, the City Council has determined to vacate said portion of Vine Street to the adjoining landowners.
What about following the proceeds?
And then, third paragraph?
I omitted the "and" to apply the proceeds for corporate purposes. And then, uh... Okay, we can delete the third whereas.
Ms. Ballance, sorry. I'd like to quote from some correspondence we received from Jim Von Tunglen, who's one of the state's top planners and is on retainer with the municipal league. And among other statements, Mr. Von Tunglen asserts, "The elected officials and citizens are in the best position to determine if abandoning the right-of-way in question would be in the best interest of the entire city and not produce an adverse impact in order to benefit one city, one citizen." So, I'd like to ask at this point, what would be the impact of doing nothing with this? There's already a building on the easement, on the property. There's already permanent structure on that, on that property. So, what would be the impact if we did nothing? It seems to me it wouldn't really change anything if we did nothing. Everything would just go on as it is now. So, I'd like to understand.
If you do nothing, you've got a title problem. You've got a gentleman who has a building that's been there various maps show, even maybe up to 100 years, and you've created a title problem for him and it's more difficult to sell. The other thing is, you also have a little bridge there that right now you're responsible, you're responsible to maintain. If it collapses, it's your responsibility. You have a street that you're really not maintaining. If you try and drive it, it's basically nearly impassable for anything but a four-wheel drive. You have shifted that responsibility to the people who care most about it because obviously the city doesn't care because it's not keeping it up. And so, it doesn't appear to be anytime in the foreseeable future that the city is going to keep it up. And if that bridge collapsed, it no longer is your problem.
Ms. Kinder just said that the street doesn't belong to us.
You have a duty to maintain it. Well, you don't have a duty to maintain it, but the easement, the use of the street belongs to you, and that gives you the duty to maintain it right now.
If we make the changes in the second and third whereas, do we need to change any part of the first one? Since we don't own the street?
No, I think it says, "Such lands have been donated to the city of Eureka Springs for a street." That is correct. It was donated for a street and only a street.
When you say there's a building that may have been there for a long time, was that building already on the street or was an addition added to put the building on the street?
I have seen a fire map from, I believe, 1909, I previously provided to you, which shows it actually encroaching then. In 1990, at least one owner, 1988, a former mayor, Ms. Davis, she testified that it had been in the existing area. In 1994, the building commissioner approved an addition at that time to which constructed part of it that was on the street. So, the city has pretty consistently approved this building into that position for at least, if I can tell you for sure, since 1994.
But financially, this pretty much, when you just said the person bought the building, they don't have clear title to it, so if they were to try to sell it, they would have a problem. So, that would be benefiting a person, right?
I think it also benefits...
Financially?
Would it benefit financially? I think the building sold without it. I don't know that it benefits financially. It benefits the title issue of it. I mean, I think it clears up a title problem. I don't know the overall value. I can't say as an appraiser that the overall value changes significantly over these 15 feet.
But isn't it hard to sell a piece of property when you don't have clear title to all of it?
This one sold.
Well, I know, but there's title insurance that you get to be sure that you own all your property when you buy it.
Sure.
So, whether it's sold or not, it seems to be like that it would benefit a person to have clear title or to have this property, the easement, turned over.
Absolutely. It would benefit, it would benefit everyone along the street to have that cleared over.
Well, I understand that, but it would definitely, it would definitely benefit one person in particular if they were to try to sell that property again, right?
Yes, at least one, definitely.
Okay.
I'm having a little trouble following this part of the conversation because you're saying that, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that it would cause a problem in the future for this property to be sold. And then, in the next breath, you're telling us that that, that property has been there and the encroachment has been there since 1909? That's over 100 years ago. And it's been bought and sold and bought and sold and bought and sold for 100 years, and by his own admission, Mr. Kettleson just bought it without a clear title. So, obviously, that's not as much as a problem as we're being led to believe it is because it's been sold over and over and over again for the last 100 years, and it hasn't been a problem. And all of a sudden, it's a problem? I'm having trouble following that line of reasoning.
Apparently, for some time, people thought that Vine Street had already been vacated.
Last note I had shows on tonight's agenda that this was postponed until after the public hearing. Is there anything significant that came out of the public hearing? And I'd also like to add on to what Mr. Levine said. I find it hard to believe that four people in a row can agree on anything in this town. Thank you, guys. Go ahead and answer my questions.
Actually, we've had two public hearings, one at Parks and then one the other day. In those two public hearings, all of them published at least twice in the paper, one person has objected, who has since withdrawn their objection and signed on to this agreement. The only people who have shown up are the four people here, but for the most part. The only objection was my original proposal, just to vacate that small area where the building encroaches. And there was an objection to that. They wanted a larger, basically the agreement we have now.
They wanted a what?
They wanted a large, to vacate the whole street as opposed to just that portion.
Make a motion to sign a number and put this ordinance on its first reading. Has amended?
We have to do this ordinance first before we do this ordinance.
The first one that should be done is the one that takes away from Parks, that the ordinance authorizing the City Council to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property that is a part of Vine Street.
Did the changes that we made on the other one need to be anything made in this one?
No, I don't see any necessary changes.
Stand by my original motion.
Okay. Mr. Second?
Yes.
Now you've seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
Okay. Just do a real call.
I've got the abstentions. But we'll need to on the next one. Ordinance number, what would be, 2159?
2159?
Yes. I'm sorry.
2159?
215.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2159, an ordinance authorizing the City Council pursuant to Chapter 12.08.01E of the Municipal Code of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as a part of Vine Street. Whereas, the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has been petitioned to vacate certain land now held as a green zone by Parks and Recreation Commission. And whereas, Section 12.08.01E of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code allows the City Council to reclaim jurisdiction over the following sections of green zone to make further discussions of the petition. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that, Section 1, that the section described below is hereby removed from the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Commission for further consideration by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. A portion of Vine Street running south from Melhollow Road to a line that runs from the western corner of Lot 6, Block 15 of the Clayton Survey of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the Clayton Survey, to the eastern corner of Lot 3, Block 13 of the Clayton Survey.
Lot 13, I think. Do y'all have Lot 13, Block 13?
Yes.
Oh, I misread? Okay, Lot 13, Block 13?
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Section 2, that provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances and solutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance number 2159 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we have to do a real call on one. So, it's a new ordinance.
Ms. Balance?
Present.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Pownall?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
No.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
So, you have 411.
Mr. DeVito?
Like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2159 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
May I second it?
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
No.
Mr. Pownall?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Present.
411.
Do we suspend the rules?
Have a real read.
We've got a read in it, about 10.
Ordinance 2159, an ordinance authorizing the City Council pursuant to Chapter 12.08.01E of the Municipal Code of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as a part of Vine Street.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance number 2159 on its second reading.
Second.
May I second it? Do you have a voice right on this?
I think so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Present.
Same.
Can you read it?
That's it?
Still getting, uh...
No, they...
Personally close to the bottom, too.
James to approve, and that's two readings.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2159 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Pownall?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Present.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
No.
411. Ordinance number 2159, an ordinance authorizing the City Council pursuant to Chapter 12.08.01E of the Municipal Code of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as a part of Vine Street.
Move to approve ordinance number 2159 on its third reading.
Second.
This will take real call. This is the... Ms. Lindblad?
No.
Mr. Pownall?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Present.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
411.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to invoke the emergency clause?
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
According to state law, we are supposed to be using an emergency clause when it is a matter of public health and safety. This is not a matter of public health and safety, so I suggest we do not pass an emergency clause on this. And it's very clear where you're supposed to use an emergency clause, public health and safety. This is not public health and safety.
Count a comment?
I agree.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, it's obvious from what's in the emergency clause that time is of the essence to get this taken care of. And we've, this has been before us for what, three months now? So, you know, we've been through this. We've made everybody come back here time and time again. We've had attorneys present at great cost to these people. They're also part of the community. It's their health, safety, and welfare that we're concerned about. I'm not going to pick and choose which members of the community are going to be afforded this. We've had plenty of time to discuss this. They've been very patient with us, and I think we need to move this matter forward. There's no ramifications of any untoward nature to the city of Eureka Springs by clarifying something that has been in limbo all these years.
Ms. Lindblad?
According to the state law, we're supposed to do it for public health and safety. It says right in the emergency clause, "In order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Eureka Springs," and I don't see anywhere where this affects the health, or the safety, or the welfare of the people of Eureka Springs for this to go for 30 days. If somebody can show me where it affects their health, safety, and welfare, then I might change my mind. But I can't really see. It's a piece of property that's been sitting there forever. Nothing is really changing on it except that we're giving up the easement. So, I don't see where there is an emergency, and I don't see where it affects their health, safety, or welfare. Because emergency clauses are very much overused, and that means this goes into effect right away, and I can't see where the health, safety, or welfare of the people of Eureka Springs, not just the people who are coming in and petitioning us, are involved here.
You further? Mr. Pownall?
If this question is appropriate or not, is it 30 days going to have an effect on when we can put in to effect the second ordinance? And is that going to affect the sale of the property?
It's already sold.
Looks like all of the building on speculation. I've been a member of this community for 17 years. From everything that I know, it has, this issue has been addressed through this committee a number of times. You've discussed it, contemplated it, and it would just help my health and safety to just move forward so I can help the tax base of this community by creating a viable business as I have done multiple times on North Main Street and continue to do. You go back to 1996, I was part of the lobbyist group that provided the sidewalks down there. So, I'm just asking to move this along as expediently as possible so that I can create business and commerce and tax base. Thank you.
Mr. Hill's father has dementia, he's 90 years old. Right now, that street is nothing but a bunch of rubble. I mean, it would, I was up there walking on it just before the meeting, and it's, it's very dangerous walking up and down the hill. And if Mr. Hill gets this property, he'll be able to improve that street for walking by his father. So, it definitely does affect him.
Is that what's referred to as regarding the existing retaining law?
Yes. Yes, that's what I agree to because Mr. Hill's father needs to get up there and try to agree to allow that land to be used mutually.
And he can't really improve that property until he has this decided.
You further? Mr. DeVito?
There's no downside to the people of Eureka Springs. I mean, I'm not going to quibble over the definition of people here. It obviously aids some people in this discussion. It does not detrimentally affect the city as a whole by going forward. As Mr. Kettleson pointed out, it provides an ability for tax generation in the community. This is an issue that should have been resolved 50 years ago. There's, there's no downside to the city. It does provide for the health, safety, and welfare of people involved in this, so it addresses the issues of an emergency clause.
Ms. Ballance?
Well, unfortunately, my crystal ball is broken, so I don't know how it might affect the city in the future. But I can imagine several scenarios where it might affect the city in the future. And so, I'm definitely not in favor of an emergency clause, and I'm really not in favor of vacating this property.
Pownall?
Clarification from, excuse me, either the city clerk or whomever may know, 13th of August, we passed this ordinance. It becomes effective the 14th of September, correct?
Yes, my understanding.
30 days from publication, yes.
So, if, if we have a law in effect in 30 days, which we can't go back and necessarily repeal, I'm, I'm of the other side. I'd like to see 100 and some years of problems resolved and get on with this and delete the emergency clause so we can pass the other one the same way without the emergency clause so everybody can get going on this thing. And 30 days from now, we can all go down and break a glass over the finished whatever.
I guess it comes down to a vote on whether to keep it in or take it out. So, we do a real call vote on that one.
Is there a motion?
Excuse me?
Is there a motion?
To invoke the emergency clause.
Oh, all right. I thought he was talking about taking it out.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Pownall?
No.
Ms. Lindblad?
No.
Ms. Balance?
No.
3-3. And you can't vote on an emergency clause.
Okay, well, motion fails. So, it's back to the original, posted 30 days after the fact. My understanding. Yes?
I'd move to sign a number to this ordinance and place it on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Present. It's as it is. It's not...
She talked about the second ordinance, correct?
Yes.
That's how she reads it.
Ordinance number is 2160. An ordinance vacating a portion of Vine Street and accepting a donation of a trail.
That needs to be amended.
Excuse me. If this doesn't go into effect for 30 days, can we do this one now?
That's a Weaver question, and he's not here.
Well, I would move to table this issue until the next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. DeVito?
I don't see anything that precludes us from passing this ordinance as I read it as, as written. We have in effect passed the other ordinance. It will take 30 days for it to go into law. I don't see anything in the wording here precluding us from moving ahead with passing this ordinance.
Probably. Don't occur with my colleague across the table. That thing is definitely don't propose an emergency clause.
Now, experience in the past has shown us that the process of, the first step is completed before the second step is taken, like with McCune Street and other vacating actions.
In turn, we have completed the first step except for the 30-day period. So, I'm ready to go ahead and read this, this one and get it over so we don't have to wait for two more weeks. I don't see any purpose in waiting two more weeks. It seems like this is just, all we're doing is for some reason trying to defer, for some unknown reason, this ordinance. And I don't see any rationale for doing that at this point in time. I think legally, we can do this.
Ms. Ballance?
Well, again, my crystal ball is broken, so I don't know if a petition is going to be walked to, to repeal this. It, it may. So, it may be, it may be pointless to do this at this point if that occurs. So, with that thought in mind, I would actually, taking into consideration the 30-day time limit before this goes into effect and giving the people a chance to petition for grievances if, if they so desire, I would actually amend my motion to postpone, to table ordinance number 2160 until the first meeting in September. Would that give us 30 days?
May I make a comment?
I would move to table...
I'm sorry.
Discussion of ordinance number 2160 for the first meeting following the passage of 30 days.
I'd say point of order, but I don't think I could answer the question. I've got a motion, a second on the table.
We have a previous motion and a second on table already.
I move to table, that overrides if, if it passes, and I've got a second.
Can you read the first motion that was made?
I'd sign a number to the ordinance and place on its first reading.
You should have motioned to table.
Was your motion?
Yes.
Did you ask me what the first motion was?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think hers trumps the original motion to do that. So, the original motion is to postpone, table this until the next September, the...
First meeting after the 30 days?
Somebody have to get on the calendar, dig it up.
24 days until the first meeting?
September 24th.
The September 24th meeting, okay, would be the pass, after the passage of the 30 days.
And then there was a second on that motion.
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Thank you.
All right, that'll be the motion we're voting on. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anything opposed?
No.
240.
Motion failed. Okay.
Shall we go back to this?
Go back to the original motion, put the number on and read it.
Ordinance 2160, an ordinance vacating a portion of Vine Street and accepting a donation of a trail. Whereas, the City Council has determined that a portion of Vine Street is not for the time being required for corporate purposes, and such lands have been donated to the city of Eureka Springs for a street which has been impracticable to achieve.
Point of order, please, excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Did, did we vote on, on this? I know we had a motion and a second. Did we vote on actually reading this ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. It was 24.
It was 411. Whereas, the City Council has determined to vacate said portion of Vine Street to the adjoining property owners. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that, Section 1, pursuant to the power granted... that section 1, pursuant to the power granted to the city of Eureka Springs under Arkansas Code annotated 1454-1042, the following described property is vacated. A portion of Vine Street running south from Mill Hollow Road to a line that runs from the western corner of Lot 6, Block 15 of the Clayton survey of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the Clayton survey, to the western corner of Lot 13, Block 13 of the Clayton survey, the vacated Vine Street. Section 2, the city of Eureka Springs agrees to accept from the owners of the vacated Vine Street and from Bruce and Patricia Levine and Steve and Deborah Holmes, a pedestrian easement over the following property in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. A non-exclusive easement for pedestrian traffic being 10 feet wide, running south from Mill Hollow Road, with its western boundary running along the center line of the vacated Vine Street... Excuse me. Past the building on the vacated Vine Street, thence along the center of the vacated Vine Street to the bluff in the vacated Vine Street, thence along the bluff in a westerly direction to a set of concrete stairs, thence from the set of concrete stairs to Vine Street. Section 3, that provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section 4, all ordinances and solutions, parts thereof in conflict herewith, are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflicts.
Yes, Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance number 2160 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Present.
Present.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeVito.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2160 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Wait, say aye. Roll call vote. Ms. Lindblad?
Don't we need to amend the title, because we already took out that there was a donation? We took it out further down. Let's see. In the first...oh, did we take it out of the first whereas? That the land has been donated to the city of Eureka Springs?
The third whereas?
Oh, we took the...yeah. So don't we need to take that out of the...yeah, on the third whereas, "The city of Eureka Springs has determined to accept in consideration of said sale the donation of a trail." And that's...the donation of a trail is in the title of the ordinance, and we already took that out.
There still is a donation of the trail. Section 2 provides for the donation of the trail.
Well, it says a non-exclusive easement.
It's still a donation.
So is that what you're considering, the donation of the trail?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it doesn't seem like that's a donation of a trail. To me, it seems like, you know, it's a non-exclusive easement, which could be a road, you said, so...
I think all of the easements that parks gets are non-exclusive.
Well, I still would like to move that we take the donation out of the trail out of the title, because it really is kind of misleading that it's a donation of a trail. It's actually...we're giving a non-exclusive easement that could be used by traffic or by pedestrians. So we're really not getting a donation of a trail, per se.
Part of the trail actually goes over private property and would not be used...well, it is non-exclusive.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to be a stickler here, but it looks like it gives the impression that a trail was donated in exchange for the easement, and that's really not what's happening here. We're just giving the...if the council passes this, we're giving a non-exclusive easement for pedestrian traffic, which you said could be a road. So it's not really a donation. It's just that you're getting the easement, and the easement could be a trail, or the easement could be a road. So it's not really a donation.
I don't believe that the title is important.
Oh, I do. You know, we've been through ordinances that have, you know, we pulled them up from years ago, and then everybody's trying to decide what that meant at the time. So to me, it is important. So anyway, I've got a motion on the table to take that part out. To suspend the rules, place it on its...
Second.
Second reading by title only.
I'm not sure that the second motion precedes the first motion. Ms. Balance?
Would you consider rewarding it, perhaps an ordinance vacating a portion of Vine Street and something about a non-exclusive easement instead of donation of a trail? Would you be willing to consider something?
It'd be fine. I don't know why. We just don't...just take it out, period.
Poundoff? I'm no lawyer, and I, you know, we make mistakes. I think the intent when we deleted the third whereas was to delete the consideration of said sale of the donation of a trail, and I think that left the intent for the ordinance to be an ordinance vacating a portion of Vine Street. I would move that that be the title of this ordinance.
A second. We've got a bunch of...
Any further discussion? Move the motion to suspend the rules and leave it on its own.
I'm here. The sentence... Enough. It's fair to... Grandly unfair. Would you...
I'd move to change the title of this ordinance to an ordinance vacating a portion of Vine Street.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
If we do that, we lose the ability to have a trail that the public can use.
I'm not talking about taking the text out. I'm just talking about changing the title. The text will still be in there for the non-exclusive easement. We're simply changing the title.
Poundoff?
Again, the only reason the title needs to be changed is we took the third whereas out. Everything else stays in effect.
Just do a roll call vote on this and get it right. Yes, ma'am.
You know, I read section 2. "The city of Eureka Springs agrees to accept from the owners of the vacated Vine Street and Bruce Levine and a pedestrian easement, which is a trail." And they're donating a trail, so, you know, let's not...
10 feet wide trail, apparently. Okay. No further discussion. The question will be...the motion will be to vote on the...
Adjusted title.
Adjusted title, that's correct.
Mr. Berry?
The question, point of question. So the only thing we're voting on is changing the title.
Yes, to an ordinance vacating a portion of Vine Street.
No.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
No.
Mr. Poundoff?
Yes.
3-3.
Okay, I can vote. Mr. DeVito?
Move to suspend rules and place ordinance number 2160 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Present.
Mr. Poundoff?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Present.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
4-0-2. Ordinance 2160, an ordinance vacating a portion of Vine Street and accepting a donation of a trail.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance 2160 on its third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Present.
Present.
That was second reading.
Third reading.
We did the second suspended.
What was the first?
Second, we debated over changing the title.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Poundoff?
Yes, ma'am. We vote.
To approve on the third reading?
Third reading.
Yes.
Voice voted.
I'm sorry?
The final was...
It's roll call.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Present.
Ms. Lindblad?
Present.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
4-0-2.
I ain't touching that one.
I still need to deal with the issue of the mercy clause, whether to read it or not, for the record.
What?
Is that true? It's on there. Okay. All right, we're just making sure that we cover all our bases. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. This electronic... Yes, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? 10-minute break.